Are we ready? Everybody ready? Is our AV ready? Great, okay. It is 7:01, and I would like to call to order the Thursday, December 12th, 2024 Meeting of the Waukegan Planning and Zoning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Grimes?
Here.
Haug?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Rivera?
Rodriguez?
Here. We do have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November 14th, 2024 Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Well, before we get a second there, before we get a second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Grimes. We do have some...
We have a motion. We don't have a second. We noticed that there was...
We have some confusion.
There was an error. There's an error in the minutes.
Commissioner Bill pointed it out. Would you like to...
Yes, on the minutes of the September 12th regular meeting of P&amp;Z, we actually had seconded by Commissioner Rivera. I don't know if he was here or not because I was absent, but in the abstention... It has me, Mr. Hague, and Rivera as being there, and I don't know if it's absent or not because I was absent, so I don't know who seconded it, really.
So at a minimum, the abstentions for that item need to be moved to the absent space. I don't know if we know who seconded it, but I'm sure we can find out and make that error... Make that fix afterwards. So with that in mind, Commissioner Grimes, you were making a motion to approve the minutes with the coming change?
Necessary correction.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to ask, before we go any further, does anybody else have any corrections or changes? Okay, can we have a second then?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Anderson. No further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bill?
I was not present.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug? Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item, item two, is audience time. This is an opportunity for anybody here to address the commission on any matter, regardless of whether it's on the agenda tonight or not, and the items that are on the agenda will be conducted as a public hearing, so if you have any comments or questions or would like to have input on those items that are on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity during the hearing. But if anybody here would like to address the commission on any matter at this point? Okay, moving on. Item three, old business. Do we have any old business to discuss? I don't believe we do. Okay, new business. Item four, new business. The first item, item A, zoning calendar 2765, is a request for a conditional use permit for a motor vehicle repair and/or service facility variance to operate and auto-related use on a lot smaller than 15,000 square feet at 701 Belvedere. Who is going to be presenting for the city?
That would be... That would be...
It's the one who's trying to get his microphone working.
Yeah, technical difficulty.
What you were saying.
Per usual, this would not be a planning and zoning commission without a few technical difficulties. Forgive me for that. Tyler Williams, I will be presenting Agenda Item 4A, which is also known as zoning calendar 22765, conditional use permit, garage, motor vehicle service, and/or repair facility, as well as the variance to operate this use in a lot smaller than 15,000 square feet. The applicant is LaRoley LLC. The owner is Mass Holdings. Location again, 701 Belvedere Road. As you can see, there's a small dot of where that is located to general Waukegan. Few more pictures of the map. Here it is. Street view, it is the west unit of the building, currently vacant, and it's next to Archer Avenue, as well as the Menta Health Academy. Some key components of this use, they're going to be doing a bunch of repair and services, such as full-service diagnostics, oil changes, suspension, brake and tire replacements, emission repairs, transmission and engine replacements, electrical wiring diagnostics and repair, exhaust replacements, differential component replacements, and HVAC. And there is a site plan as well, as you can see on the right-hand side. It may be a little hard to see, but I'll talk about it. There's a few spots, I think they said about five total, or seven. So there's some in the front, and then there's two as well in the rear with a lift station. As you can see, there's not really any spots outside for parking, so all of the employee parking, as well as the vehicles they will be working on, will remain inside this building. As well as the conditional use, this use also requires a variance, and that is because Section 8.07-2 of the Unified Development Ordinance states that any use related to auto repair requires the lot to be 15,000 square foot in size. As you can see from our mapping system, this is about just under 12,000 square foot. So that's why they needed the variance. Here's a couple of findings of fact, standards for conditional uses that we use, and a few of the key conditions I wanted to talk about were six, seven, eight, and nine. They're all related to parking outside of the facility. As mentioned, they stated to us, you know, they only need the inside parking spaces. As you can see, there's a few vehicles along Archer Avenue. They stated that those are not their vehicles. They're related to a different use. And then there's also a parking lot directly across the street on Belvedere. We've heard complaints of cars being parked over there, so we just wanted to let them know that any use going into this building cannot use the parking on Archer Avenue. If they wish to use the lot to the north, they will have to provide a crosswalk for any pedestrians or employees crossing Belvedere. We know it's a high rate of traffic, a high rate of speed and highly traffic size, so we just want to make sure there's, you know, preventive measures in case they do plan on using that. And then here's the findings of fact again for the conditional uses, as well as the findings of fact for standard variances. Is there any questions from the commissioners?
Commissioner Haynes?
Of the lot that's across the street on Belvedere, who owns that lot?
That is a good question. It is not owned by the owner of this building or any of the surrounding parcels. We think the use to the left of this one is renting that space, but we can definitely do more digging, but we didn't... Yeah, we couldn't find that problem.
But that's not the request to use that, or the plan to use that is not listed in any of the documents we have, so at this time, that's not the...
Yeah, right now, yeah, that's totally separate. We just stated it, so in case in the future they do use it, or if we see them using it, we can say, point to the conditional use, that parking lot is not allowed for vehicles to be parked there.
Any other questions for city staff?
How many vehicles will be inside? So you have the employees, and there are two employees?
Yes.
And then whatever vehicles they're working on?
Yes, that's correct. So like I said, the total number would not exceed, I would imagine, I mean, there's only spots for like five or six cars, so they, you know, they can fit, yeah, about seven, I would say.
Okay.
And it would be good to get just verification from the applicant themselves on that.
Any other questions from the commissioners for city staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to ask who is going to be presenting for the applicant? Okay, would you please come forward? Are you the only one that's going to be speaking?
There, I can translate for them. They just don't speak any English.
Okay. Okay. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and please state your name and your affiliation to the project.
Alan Levitt, owner of Mass Holdings.
And before you leave the podium, also, please make sure you fill out the sign-up sheet on that. You don't have to do it right now, but before you... Okay, please proceed.
Sure, so LaRoley, they are brand new. This is, they've been in the service industry for all of their lot, for all of his life. Terry O, the owner, is from Georgia. He's been in the States a couple of years, and he's looking to open up his first small-scale service shop. They typically specialize in, he's a great technician, typically specializing in anything automotive that you guys can imagine, from suspension, HVAC, brakes, motor and transmission replacements. They currently work on about two to three cars a week. Hopefully, their business will grow, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Any of the commissioners have questions for the presenters? No? Okay, that was short and sweet. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in support of this project? Is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in opposition to this project? Please, please come forward. Okay, thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
I'd like to swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please state your name and your affiliation to the project.
My name is Alexander Rosumo. Thank you for having me today. I'm one of the owners of the houses, just down a couple houses. So do I need to write, sign my name?
Yes, sir.
Before you leave the podium, please.
So I have lived on Archer Avenue. I've lived there since 2007, so just last, I would say last, maybe five years, all the owners of that property been nothing but pest. They've been irritating me personally. I know the other, other people that live there, they exposed to danger because of people parking there. I took pictures. Every time I would see something, I'd take a picture. And that's consistently. You see different times of the day, different vehicles, so this, I've just been collecting this, just because I know this is coming up. So could I forward these pictures to you so you could take a look, or is that, is that possible?
I can take them.
You want to do, pass these around?
So about a year ago, the different owner was there, and he drove on that, on Archer Avenue like he owned the place, and that's how he ran into my vehicle. Okay, we tried to get him to court. He probably sold the business. Somehow, he disappeared. Never heard of him. We stuck his broken car, okay? So the problem with that property... Can you go a couple of slides to this one? Okay, there's a sidewalk which do not park right on it. Customers park there, nobody enforcing them. Nobody's telling them you cannot park there, okay? You could see on the pictures that different vehicles, deliveries, customers, same thing on Archer Avenue, those big box trucks. Not, not only they park there, but they park throughout the street. So even went all the way to the last house. If you, if you get police reports of complaints, you will hear a lot of complaints about that business. So not, not only they alternate parking, okay? If they alternate parking every hour, as it says on the sign there, okay, that's fine. I know everybody, when I have a good business, I'm all for that. But they made from the, from the residential area, they made that a commercial, you know? There's a residence lived down Archer Avenue, you know? It's not, it's not peaceful to drive by there. Somebody parked down the corner, large vehicles. The first three rows to the Belvedere Road have to be compact, because when you turn in there, you want to see where you're turning into it. You don't want to avoid anybody driving around. So that's, that's another thing. They don't alternate. Some of the pictures show that they're already using that. They're already working there. I don't know if there's permission for that, but the, I took the pictures that they be working on those big vehicles, those box trucks, and the box trucks parked there the whole week. So that's my chief complaint, and I want to bring that before you. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else who wanted to speak out in opposition to this project? Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the gentleman that just spoke? Commissioner...
I just want to be clarified. These are new owners, and the vehicles are going to be in the building. Is that what I just heard previously?
Yes, and I think, sir, you're talking about the complaints that you have, most of them are for the previous owners. Is that correct?
No, this is current pictures. This is, this past couple of weeks have been taking pictures. So this is car, whoever owns it, they're still operating the building, and they're not parking inside. They're parking everything but inside. They're parking outside. So they're supposed to, according to introduction, they're supposed to park in the inside, but that's not, that's not the fact. That's not how they do things, so...
Commissioner Haynes?
And in fact, I did drive by there, and that is, in fact, true. There's cars all up and down that road, so I don't know where the cars and trucks come from, but there's a lot of cars and trucks on Archer and along the front of the building.
Yes, and in fact, those box, you see one of the slides on those pictures, they, they actually working on them inside, in the rear of the building. So they, whoever is, it belongs to, whoever's doing business there is to that property.
Is the building currently occupied, according to the city?
The east unit is, not the west unit. So there's two separate units. If you can see from the left picture, there's kind of like a jagged edge to the building. There's pretty much a split right down the middle. So the one closest to Archer, there are tenants in there, but they're not supposed to be parking on Archer, and like I said, we've been told that that's a different business, so we can definitely ticket those vehicles. But yeah, there is someone in the east, just not the west.
And is that an automotive, that's an automotive business as well, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And this is for the west building?
Correct.
Okay, so to be clear, there's nobody in that building right now that they would like to go into, and they would like to get a variance so that they can go into that building and set up their business. So this is not the same person that you're complaining about.
There's not supposed to be. If there, I mean, if there's evidence there's people in there, then I would take the evidence, but there's not supposed to be anyone working on the west unit in that building.
Could the owner speak to that? Could the owner speak to that issue, that question? And sir, do you own the other building next door, too?
There are one building.
Okay, so there's two units?
Yeah, they're just split. So we've had this problem since I bought this building 10 years ago. Our neighbor, and I've made multiple calls to building and code, our neighbor to the west parks all of his pickup trucks, box trucks. I think it's called Garcia's Automotive, and that's why we put up, we hired a company called, I think it's Lake County Towing, to put their signs up everywhere, to tow vehicles away. And it's not just them. There's residences, residences that park there, there's people that live on the street that park there, there's residential people that park there, so it's a whole mix of everybody that parks right there. People park behind the alley that's supposed to be used, and they block our current tenants that are to the, it's called Victor's Auto Repair, that's east, where there's just people that just park all up and down the alley there. So 99% of that is not from anything that we're doing. There's a ton of people that just park everywhere there.
The neighbor that you're referring to is on the other side of the parking lot, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The neighbor you're referring to is on the other side of the parking lot?
Right, so it's, it's, it's our building, then there's a parking lot, and then just west of that, there is a, which I've made, which I've actually had three of their vehicles towed already.
And that parking lot belongs to the neighbor?
Correct. Correct.
Commissioner Grimes?
To the applicant, there are six conditions placed upon you. Have you read those, and can you meet?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, there are 16 conditions that are recommended.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, the applicants read that? Do they understand what's being recommended?
Yes, sir.
And do they feel that they can go along with those conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner, yes, a second.
I just want to draw the commission's attention to conditions nine and 10, which seem to address directly the parking situation. Nine is no vehicles or any equipment associated with the business shall be stored or displayed within the public right-of-way to the east of the property along Archer Avenue. Number 10, all repair of vehicles shall take place within the confines of the building. No repair of vehicles is permitted outdoors in front of the property and the parking lot across the street, if approved or within the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Mr. Bill?
This is more, more towards the city. With the new UDO, is there any language in there that would actually address buffer zones between zoning business versus residential? I've seen some places have multilingual signs up, too, because some people, if they can't speak English, and you just have no parking here. You know, it's just, I'm just wondering, it's going to be an ongoing problem as congestion goes on, and we have multi-language, so I don't know if the UDO addresses that or not.
Sure. So the UDO requires buffers between differences in zoning districts, so if there's a business district that's next to or across the street from a residential district, we typically require a buffer yard. Since this is an existing building, we're not expecting them to tear down 10 feet of their building and install that. But for a new building, yes, that is a requirement. As far as signage goes, we don't require any business to put up any sign, unless it's like building or fire code. You can condition that on the CUP if you'd like, and if you think that would be a necessary component of their operation.
What I, what I'm looking at, I see a problem, and it's not necessarily yours, because it seems you're doing due diligence in what you're doing, as far as...
Yeah, they, well, the tenants have also been instructed that if they...
Can you talk?
Yes, sir. They've also been instructed that if they do park there, their vehicles will be towed. So, you know, we're very clear on the congestion issue, but it's, a lot of it has nothing to do with our actual occupants that are looking to get into this building.
Again, to the city, is that a code enforcement, or is it basically just something, a police issue?
The vehicles, are you asking about? Yeah, that's code. We can certainly reach out to code enforcement and have someone out there patrolling and writing tickets for those vehicles.
Police when they're in the street.
And police, oh, yeah, since it's a right-of-way, that would be police, since they patrol the streets.
I think it's important that we not penalize this business for what's going on with the other business, but just with the diagram that was included, that other business is junky, and I'm sure that this is not necessarily up to code, if you look at it. So I guess certainly the gentleman who spoke, who's the resident, has a concern, and I think that's really important, and it's, I don't feel it's necessarily the issue with this business, because everything's going to be inside, but I guess the, the warning is, if it's not inside, you're saying they're going to be towed, and that would not be acceptable according to the conditional use permit.
Right. And I still think, do we, did we get an answer on the building currently, which is, that we're speaking of? Are there people in there working currently?
No.
It's vacant?
No, no, correct.
Okay.
How long has it been vacant?
I'm sorry?
How long has it been vacant?
Previous tenant moved out, I want to say November of la, or maybe October of last year. Yeah, October, November of 2023.
Okay, and the petitioners, you say they don't understand English, but they're, you've communicated with them, and they are aware of all?
Yes.
All of what's involved in this?
Yes, and there's a translator for the gentleman as well here.
Okay.
Would it be possible to add that condition that we were talking about of bilingual signs to this? I mean, I realize that there's two other businesses, one on either side, which potentially could be causing part of this problem, but if we can start right now with this building and not penalize this particular business person because of what the other two buildings are doing, possibly, or what the one building is doing, and put something in place to maybe prevent that from happening? Can we, how do we add a condition to make a motion to add that, or?
Right, when you make your motions, you may make your motion, if you wish, to recommend approval, to approve subject to the conditions that's set forth in the packet, with the additional condition of bilingual signs saying no parking. It'd probably be good, once we're drafting, to be specific about where you want those signs, whether it be facing Archer, or what?
Well, if the homeowner or the business owner can speak to where there is the issue of parking, is it in front of the building on Belvedere, or in the alleyway, or on Archer? Where, on Archer, this, this particular business doesn't abut Archer.
Right, it does not. But on Archer, there's always different vehicles parked, and also, the whole alley is always blocked with somebody's vehicles.
I mean, so what would you, as, as being familiar with the area and where the issue is, where would you feel that this business would have perhaps ability and perhaps responsibility to have a sign, and then we could ask for that to be in bilingual, since we need to specify where it would be?
Sure, I would just put anywhere on the Archer side of the building, and anywhere on the back, back of the building, facing the alley.
But this is a condition for this particular business, so where, I don't want to make this business responsible for everyone else, the two other businesses that are there. Where for this business, would it be just appropriate in the back, on the alley side of the business?
It'd be nice to put them both, so people would just know.
For this business, so this business won't have people parking in the wrong place.
This business only has one point of entry, which is right there, through the front. So they, they wouldn't have customers parking on the side, or on Archer, or in the alley.
Isn't there a door in the alley, or no?
It's, there's one door that comes this way, then there's like a partition about three-quarters through the building, and then there's a small door that leads to the alley. But customers would never, ever go through that small door. It would just be right through here.
So really, this business, I mean, the, the place to put the sign is in the front?
There's, there's no problem in the front. I think, I think the issue is, is from the property to the west, that they just park cars on the Archer side, which has really nothing to do with them. But because they share a building that... But because they share a building that borders Archer, the, so there's Archer Avenue, there's Victor's, um, Autotech, and then there's La Roli. So, whoever's on, parking on Archer, is not really having anything to do with these guys.
You know, I hate to say it, but I, I don't think it's our problem to solve. I mean, there's a problem there, and these people are not responsible for it, they're not even in their building yet. You know, we're trying to solve a problem that's there by penalizing them, which I-
Well, I'm trying not to penalize them by, by stating, you know, where is it appropriate? It doesn't seem like there is an appropriate place.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can really do anything about it. You know, I hate to say it to this neighbor, because he's got a decent gripe, but, I mean, that's not our responsibility in zoning and planning to take care of traffic issues on, on, on the street, and that's essentially what it is. I mean, the police or somebody's got to go out there and tow cars and ticket them.
And I'll be more than happy to put up signs in English and Spanish, no parking on the Archer side, on the alley side, no problem at all.
You own the building, so you can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it'd be great if you could do it, but, you know, I, I just think we're almost making zoning law here by telling him to put signage on his building so that they can't park.
I don't mind. Like, we'll get, yeah. Yeah, we'll get, I'll get them put up.
Well, but is it, is it really a signage issue, or is it an enforcement issue?
I-
Exactly right, they're going to ignore the signs and park there anyway.
I don't know if this is going to solve the problem, if this is what we do, you know.
So, I think that there are signs everywhere there already, that, uh, no parking, you will be towed, it doesn't do anything. It's, I mean, I've called Mr. Nagron many times to go out there, tow, ticket, there's just, no matter what, no matter, I've had 10 different tenants there across 10 years, same problems.
So, Nicole, if, I mean, Noel, I'm sorry. I know that there's conditions in this particular where we're stating that, you know, when we're bringing a new business in and giving them permission for variances, et cetera, we're saying, stating that if they don't follow the conditions that are laid out here, they can, planning and zoning can go back in there and potentially, you know, take steps to enforce things or revoke permissions, et cetera. Is there a way to look into this particular business that seems to be causing the issue, and see these violations, if they're violating conditions of what their permits were in there, perhaps if there was a variance there or something?
Yes, unfortunately, that business predates our conditional use permits for that type of business, so we don't have conditions to enforce there, but we still do have city codes, um, and we can enforce those, and do enforce them to the extent we're able. Steven Nagron, the licensing and zoning officer, is here, as he generally is at our meetings, to hear, so he'll go take a look at it and, um, see what the current situation is. The street and alley parking is a police enforcement issue, not a code enforcement issue. Code has jurisdiction on the properties, police has jurisdiction on the rights-of-way. I would encourage the business owner and the property owner to continue to report things when they see them, whether it's illegal parking on the street or alley, or improper parking, or other code issues on the properties. So, the neighbors that are impacted in, um, calling regularly, um, they're, you know, call once a day if it's a continuing problem, um, because that's how we build a case, that's how we document it. Take pictures, report it to code enforcement with the pictures of what you're seeing, so that there is evidence in the file, so that then when there's a, an action, then there's a history of complaints and demonstration of the issues, so that if by the time code enforcement or police gets there, the problem vehicle or whatever is moved, there's still evidence that it was there and, um, something to support the complaint.
Commissioner Grimes.
This is a little off, but I live on a cul-de-sac, and I see policemen or code enforcement giving tickets to people whose car comes out, like, from the tube, the whatever. I've gotten a ticket myself like that, which I think is crazy, so there's inconsistency, and I agree with the other commissioners that we shouldn't hold, you know, the new people to what's happened in the past or might happen in the future, because there's inconsistencies there, we have no authority, because I get PO'd, I got, I went to the police chief, I don't play. What happened, why am I getting a ticket? My, my car's a little bit right there to the sidewalk. That's crazy, to me, I rest my case, sorry.
Thank you. I think the gentleman who objected would like to, uh, respond to this.
Yeah, and code enforcement has done a great job previously ticketing, there's been a ton of tickets, you know, every time I call, they're there very quickly, so.
Thank, thank you.
I think this gentleman is saying no truth. If you look at the picture, the yellow box is inside the roll-up door, you can see the frame lifter, uh, because I work, I, I worked in the cars. I walked, I walked that alley with my mother, I drove by many times, I know that building very well, okay? One of the pictures shows a big yellow box inside the roll-up, and that's where they operate. So, indeed, those boxes belong to this, uh, to the east side building. So, otherwise, why, why wouldn't that yellow box be inside? Okay, that's, that's one thing, okay? Clearly, clearly, if they would like to park on inside, let's eliminate the park on the east side on Archer Avenue. If there is no use for it, let's eliminate that. Then, nobody will park there, and that, that will solve a lot of problems for us.
That, that may be a good idea, but it's not, that's not within our purview. That's not what we do. Okay, uh, but you're also talking about the, um, west side, no, the east side building, and they are moving into the west side building, correct? Okay, so these trucks that you're talking about, that are, that have been a problem, are actually not from the west building that we're discussing today?
So, so, the west side, which is, which is farther away-
Which is vacant right now, which is the one they're going to be moving into?
The picture right now, right? If you go in the back of the building, there's a roll-up door with a frame lifter where you can do maintenance. And one of the pictures indeed shows a big yellow truck in it. So, you know, you can't go around pictures.
Is this a big yellow truck in recent weeks that belongs to these gentlemen?
The picture was taken recently, it's still on my phone, it was taken recently, and, you know, to my understanding, they, they've been doing operation there for-
Do you know anything about this?
Could you take a look at the picture?
Yeah.
Sure, please.
So, I want to focus everyone's, uh, well, the commission's attention, and focus really on what is, what's before it, as has been said, um, by many, including Commissioner, how a lot of the parking issues are enforcement issues. Really, what's before you tonight is the conditional use permit and the accompanying, uh, variance. The conditional use permit, the question you should be asking yourself is, um, does this meet the standards? Does this kind of use fit into this particular property? And so, a lot of operations, those type of, uh, issues really come up on an enforcement level, not really on a, is this a proper use for this particular property?
Thank you, thanks for getting us back on track. Did you have anything else to say, sir?
Yes, sir, and I've been calling police about, about the, the vehicles that parked alone, and they tell me, oh, they're already ticketed, so they're already notified, if they're already ticketed once, they cannot, they've never been towed. So, it's, it's, for me, it's pointless to call the police, because they either never show up, they give them ticket, the ticket sits there, okay, we already notified, they cannot give them second time, that's the problem I'm dealing with. So, if, if, if they, you know, I have no problem them having that business, just be respectful to the residents for the safety, number one. When they park on a, on a, on a Belvedere, they're black in the view, but a stop sign, the, you know, it's a blind spot, so we have to look out, either turn into the Archer or pulling out, it's, it's just dangerous.
Okay, thank you, sir. Once again, these are our parking issues, which are not, uh, within our purview, and secondly, uh, this business has not been operating there so, so far, so I don't believe that they could be, uh, blamed for the issues that you've had so far, but I, I would like to just, uh, uh, ask the owner, the building owner, and the, uh, new, uh, petitioners to just be aware of that situation, and, uh, I think it's something that probably has to be dealt with if, if there are dangerous parking conditions there, but it's not, once again, this is not within our purview. We do not make decisions on parking. So, um, I believe at this point, um, I would like to ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, motion to adopt the findings of fact and recommend approval of conditional use permit and variations as set forth on zoning calendar 2765.
Subject to any conditions?
Well, subject to the conditions that are set down, and, uh, report the 16 conditions, obviously.
Okay, Commissioner Haynes, or, Commissioner Anderson, who was on the one to do?
I'll second, oh, will you unsecond?
You're not going to edit? Okay, then Commissioner Anderson is seconding that motion without any, um, changes? So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hogg?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck with your project. Uh, next step is going to be the Community Development Committee, Monday, January 6, approximately 5:00 PM, uh, in this chamber. Thank you, moving on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we have a conditional use permit application and a variance, were they, were they together, in the same motion?
As it's written, they're together, was that the motion that you made, I'm sorry?
I just read what you, uh, wrote for us, so yes.
Permit and variations, and that's, that covers it? Okay.
I would like to just add something to the gentleman, the neighbor, who was here to make a statement. My suggestion would be, besides the police and code department, you contact your aldermen. Call your alderman and talk to him, him or her about this, and have, ask for their help.
Thank you very much. Next item, uh, item B, zoning calendar 2766, is a request for, for variances from the maximum allowed yard coverage in the rear and interior side yards by impervious surfaces at 928 Glenwood Avenue. Sam?
Hello, everybody. I apologize for the typo on the screen, this is zoning calendar 2766. This is a driveway variance, um, as you can see, it's from 928 Glenwood. They have an existing non-conforming driveway, so a driveway that they're allowed to continue using, but it doesn't meet our current requirements. Per city rules, when you tear up a driveway and replace it, you need to meet current city rules. Uh, this is an application to slightly vary from those city rules and have a different driveway design. Uh, this is a two-unit residence in the third ward. And there's another thing showing you the location, it's in a sea of residential. So, the few rules at play here, there's a maximum driveway width of 22 feet, we measure that as the distance of the driveway along the sidewalk. Right now, the existing driveway is a little bit longer than that, they're going to be meeting that one. The bigger issue for the permit review here is the maximum coverage of impervious surfaces. So, asphalt, concrete, accessory structures like sheds or detached garages, these all count towards your impervious coverage. Impervious coverage is not allowed to cover more than 40% of any individual yard, is not allowed to cover more than 40% of the entire yard area combined, and can't be larger in area than the footprint of the principal structure, or the house, in this case. And then the third one is that the curb cut, the apron, needs to be the same width as the driveway where they meet at the sidewalk, so you can't have a driveway that's wider, so you're driving on grass, all that jazz. This application is proposing a 14% variance to do a 54% coverage of the total area of 1,500 square feet of proposed paving. So, originally, when this permit application came through, this was the application, uh, as you can see, there's a tiny little area of green that they were proposing to remove, to make the maximum driveway width 22 feet and meet that code, and to make the curb cut meet the width of the driveway, so meeting those two codes. Uh, the permit had the comment to reduce the area, since the driveway and the shed combined made more than 40% coverage of that yard. The contractor submit this plan to go down to a uniform 22-foot width, remove slightly more area. This was about, it was just above 40%, it was almost to where it could be approved administratively, but it was still a little bit too wide, so it was sent back for corrections to just reduce it a little bit more, bring it under 40%. Uh, it was at that time that we met with the homeowner, and they expressed their intent to apply for the variance to replace the driveway as it currently is. So, this is the most recent site plan we have, uh, it matches that original, uh, proposal that was first uploaded to the permit. It is still removing that small triangle and widening the apron a little bit, so it'll still be meeting the 22-foot width requirement, uh, and it'll still be the same width as the apron, but it will be above 40% coverage. These are your findings of facts for variances, please hold to these standards as you make your decision. I'm happy to answer any questions of the city before we invite up the applicant.
Any questions for city staff?
Yeah, so he just wants to repave his driveway.
And essentially the same footprint, yeah. I can only approve-
That doesn't sound too tough a decision to me, I mean, how long have you been living in the house, and how long has this driveway been this way?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can only approve the permit with this variance, since it doesn't meet the codes.
Understand, this seems like a slam dunk to me, but that's just me.
Any other comments or questions for city staff?
My, my final comment, this is the final decision place, so this will not go to city council, it finishes here, yeah.
Okay, no other comments, questions for city staff? Okay, who is going to be, uh, presenting? Okay, would the two of you please, uh, come to podium, I'm going to swear you in? Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed and state your name and your relationship to the project, and also please make sure you sign the, uh, sign-up sheet before you leave the podium.
My name is Gerald Cole, I'm the owner of the property. I've lived there since October of 1998, when I purchased it. The driveway has been in the same way, same condition and same outline since 1998, when I purchased it. I have made no changes to it since 1998. I'm having a problem with seepage in my basement, and in order to get the seepage done, I need to remove and replace the driveway instead of repair it. It's my understanding from Sam that I could repair it, but I can't replace it in its current condition. This has cost me 900 bucks already. I had to get a plat of survey, I've had to file for the variance, and, uh, I'm, I don't mean to pull on tear strings, but I'm a disabled veteran, and my, uh, tenant is a 65-year-old woman, and we just need space to get out of my cars, but I'm not asking to change anything. I, I am asking to change something, I'm asking to do what, exactly what he asked me to do, which was put the curb cut in, and I'm agreeing to do that, and that's costing $600. So, I'm, uh, I'm willing to do whatever is necessary, but I'm just asking that you allow me to keep it the same as it is, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, sir. Any of the commissioners have questions for the petitioner?
I just have one question, I'm sorry, this is for the city. Uh, if we approve this to be done as this gentleman is asking, is it going to continue moving forward as a legal non-conforming? Is that going to be the level that it will be at moving forward?
No, it'll be a conforming driveway, so legal, and since it has the variance conforming.
I have a question, I'm his daughter, so does that mean, like, if something ever happens again, if there's any issues, you don't have to go back to the council or the board?
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Jerry Colbeble, I'm the daughter.
Okay, I'd like you to get closer to the microphone, please, so it's picked up for the recording.
I had a question if, because this has been a nightmare, um, if this is approved today for it to be the same width with the extended lip from the, cutting out the grass portion, will this have to come, if something ever happened again, and the property stayed within our family, would we have to come to the board if something, city council, if the driveway needed to be repaired in any fashion? Okay.
Yeah, largely like how it is now, if you were to repair, just make mirror, um- Yeah, largely like how it is now, if you were to repair, just make mirror, um, repairs to the non-conforming driveway, you could do that without, um, this sort of approval. If you were to get this, um, this variance and you just needed to make repairs to it, and it's largely staying how it is as approved, uh, it's staying, you know, how it's approved tonight, then no, you wouldn't have to come back just to make some repairs.
Okay, so it, we've done the blacktopping over the 24 years, but it needs to be dug up and done again, and they, adding that extra lip, cutting out the grass is fine, but originally, they were saying cut out the back of the house and doing so much, and my dad, he needs the room, like, he has Parkinson's, the tenant is there, like, we need room for him to get in and out the driveway. That's with Kaplan, so Kaplan, that's who submitted that, Kaplan is going to do a full, we had to go through all of this, so we couldn't get it last season, so the basement is still leaking, we're gonna go through the snow season, obviously, we can't get it now, but when the springtime comes, they said we had to come here into another meeting in January. This is it? Okay, perfect, so after, so after-
You don't wanna see us again?
No, no, it's not that, I would love to see you guys again, but if it's approved today, when the springtime hits, then we'll just go ahead, because the, they have already had half of the money already.
Are you asking what the deadline is to perform this repair?
Well, I don't think that, is there a deadline now, if you approve today, because we can't get it until the spring?
Sam explained to me that if approved, the permit would be good for one year.
Right.
That's correct.
Was that your question?
Yes, that was it.
I additionally, she's saying, we, the way that chairman, or, uh, uh-
Council.
Council, I was gonna call you Marcus, and I knew that wasn't appropriate. Council explained it was that if there were repairs needed to be made, but what if, if they still own the property within their family in 20 years, and they need to replace the driveway completely again, will this variance allow them to do it as it exists today without having to come back and ask for permission? Yes, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Is there anybody here who would like to speak out in opposition to this request? We do have one letter of support, as a matter of fact, um, by Robert Bolton, 929 Glenwood Avenue, I guess that's a neighbor, and he is, he signed this letter of support on behalf of the Bolton family, supporting, without, he didn't give any reason, but he is supporting it. Okay, um, at this point in time, I'd like to ask for a motion, and again, just to clarify, this does not go before the Community Development Committee or City Council, this is a final decision here, is that correct?
That's correct, if you look at the cheat sheet, um, it is a, if you choose to approve, motion to approve, it's not a motion to recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bill?
I make a motion to adopt the findings and facts of the approved variances set forth in the zoning and, uh, zoning calendar 2766.
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Grimes, any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck, get it done.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Next item, item 4C, zoning calendar number 2767, is a request for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle services in the B3 General Commercial District at 3201 Sunset Avenue.
All right, good evening, commissioners. Um, I am presenting on zoning calendar 2767, which is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle services in the B3 district and, at 3201 Sunset. This is over in the west side of the city, as you can see here, um, all the way over in our eighth ward, kind of nestled between some Waukegan properties and some, um, unincorporated properties as well.
Excuse me, just for the record, I want to mention that Commissioner Grimes has left the room.
The business is going to be a motor vehicle services business specializing in window tinting for residential windows, as well as vehicle windows, and then remote start installation for vehicles. The property is over 15,000 square feet, so unlike the previous CUP for motor service vehicle, this one does, is well above that criteria. The unit itself, though, for this business is going to be about 750 square feet, they have three bay doors, and they have six designated parking spaces. Their planned hours of operation is 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday, no improvements are planned to the building, um, they'll be taking kind of as-is. A couple of conditions that I wanted to point out to you all, other than the standard, you know, get a business license, things like that, that you typically see, we have a couple that are more specific to this motor service use. I do wanna note that the kind of typical number two condition that you see up here, um, we are altering the language just a bit to match a little bit with some of the other languages that we have in the previous conditions, similar to the one that you saw with, uh, 2764, this is matching that language, so stricken out is what you see in your packets, must be in conformance with, we're gonna strike that and change that to shall be operated and maintained in conformance with the B3 zoning district. So this is just a little bit more clear on what those expectations are for that business and the codes that it needs to follow. Um, I do wanna also point out, uh, number six is kinda follow with the hours of operation. Number seven is all work on vehicles must take place indoors, no work can be done outside or in the public right of way. Number eight, motor vehicles must be parked on dustproof hard surface in marked parking spaces, so they cannot be parked in grass, gravel, things like that. And number 11, no storage of vehicles or materials related to the business can be outside, any vehicles awaiting service must be in appropriately marked spaces and must appear operable, so as a motor, um, as this surface is mostly just remote start installation and windows, that shouldn't be a concern, but we're including that in the conditions.
Excuse me, for the record, Commissioner Grimes is returning to the meeting.
Are there any questions?
Commissioners have any questions for city staff? Okay, who's gonna be presenting for the petitioner? Okay, I'm gonna swear you in, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and your affiliation to the project, and also please make sure that you fill out the sign up sheet before you leave the podium.
Adrian Flores, and I'm, uh, the, the owner of the business.
Thank you, please proceed.
Um, is there, what do I, excuse me?
Tell, tell us what you're gonna do.
Oh, yeah, I'm just gonna be working on, uh, vehicle window tints, occasionally, I'll be going out to businesses and, uh, residential houses to, uh, do, uh, tinting on the windows as well. Um, as for the winter, that's mostly my summer season, for the winter, I will be, uh, doing vehicle remote starts. I'm the, gonna be the only employee, so I'll only be working on one vehicle at a time. I'll only be using that, the bay on the right, so it's not like I'm gonna have multiple cars there waiting, it's just gonna be, my longest appointment, you know, it's gonna be three, four hours, I'm not gonna have, like, cars parked on the side, it's gonna be pretty much same day turnaround for vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Any of the commissioners have questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Bill?
In the nature of your business, you said it takes about three hours to do a process for windows, I take it? Normally, the customers have it dropped off and come back, or do they stay there?
It, it really, it really depends, um, a lot of times, when it's three or four hours, they just drop the car off, and then they come back and pick it up when it's ready, but there is gonna be a little, a waiting area if they choose to, to wait for it.
Any other questions from commissioners? No, okay, thank you. Is there anybody here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in opposition to this request? Okay, in that case, it's time to ask for a motion, zoning calendar 2767, do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt-
Commissioner Haynes?
I'm sorry, yes, I, I'll move to adopt the findings of fact and recommend approval of conditional use permit as set forth in zoning calendar 2767.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Haynes, second by Commissioner Haug. Any further discussion on this motion? Are there conditions that we should be including in that motion?
They are as set forth in 2767, so they are, unless you're making some sort of change, they are as set forth, um, in the staff report prepared by Rachel.
So do you want to, uh, modify the motion to include the conditions?
Uh, yes, to include conditions 1 through 15 as listed in the Planning and Zoning Commission staff report.
Uh, motion recommend approval, subject to the conditions, Commissioner Haug, is that your second?
Yep, second then.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck with your project. Uh, next step is Community Development Committee, Monday, January 6th, approximately 5:00 PM in this chamber. Good luck. Zoning calendar 2768 is the adoption of the 2025 City of Waukegan zoning map.
Yes, so last meeting of the year, which means we have the exciting task of adopting next year's zoning map, or at least, I think it's exciting. We included all of the map amendments from this year, or the approved map amendments, as well as some incorrect changes we made in the UDO, and some missed changes that we made with the UDO. Um, any of those last two, we notified the property owners of the impending change. It's just to correct it and make it what it should be, what it's actually operating as. I'm happy to go into any detail if you need. Um, you have a list of the properties that are being changed, as well as a list of the zoning districts.
This includes that summary list of the, uh, UDO revisions?
That's next, that is, this is only map amendments and adopting the 2025 map.
Okay, so-
Yes, correct.
That'll be under, oh, I see, okay, 2769, got it.
Yeah. Hold that thought.
Getting ahead of myself here. Yes. Okay, any questions for city staff?
I imagine this was a monumental task, go through this and look for errors and stuff in omission, so thank you for your work on that.
I did not do it alone, I'm happy to have a team, uh, we did a lot of the work last year, and obviously, we didn't get all of them in the UDO, so this is hopefully the last of the cleanups.
Any other comments or questions? Is there anybody here who would like to, um, speak out in favor of or against, or in support of, or, uh, just ask questions about this request? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of the 2025 City of Waukegan zoning map.
Is second here?
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Anderson, second, uh, by Commissioner, um, who's that? Oh, Young, okay. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now moving on to, um, 2769, this is a consolidated minor text amendment to City of Waukegan Unified Development Ordinance, UDO.
Yes, so, believe it or not, we're coming up on six-month anniversary of the UDO's adoption, hooray. I think it's been great so far, hopefully you think the same. I have before you a long list of edits, although they are all pretty minor. If you recall, there's a one-year holding period before we make amendments to the UDO that are substantive, these are all little ones, commas, clarifications, fixing typos, things like that. Again, I'm happy to go into as much or as little detail as you need, happy to answer questions about any of these.
Anybody have any questions regarding this? And these are the changes that we talked about when we approved the, um, we proved that we, we knew that there were going to be some non-substantive changes, we were just, uh, uh, moving forward on, uh, in consideration of the time involved, we needed to get it, get it passed, get it into effect, and we knew that these were coming, so this is just a follow-up to that.
Yes, um, I know it seems like a lot, uh, out of a 262-page document, I apologize that we did not get every comma on the first time.
Well, I'm impressed that you caught all of these.
I read this document too much.
Commissioner Bill, did you wanna say something?
There was something I saw in here about a, a sign that had to be one foot square, is that just on a residence?
Uh, the real estate signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is an example of those clarifications, we had them, like, lumped into another category, and it wasn't very clear, um, and especially if you're a real estate agent, you're probably going to type in real estate signs, so we thought it was clear if we put it into its own section.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in opposition to this request? Okay, at this point, I would like to ask for a motion. Commissioner Grimes, is that you?
Oh, I'll, I'll make the motion, sorry. Didn't register.
This moving your microphone.
I'll be more happy to do it. Motion to recommend approval of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance.
Motion by Commissioner Haug, do you have a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Grimes, any further discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you for all your hard work on this. It was a big project, and, um, I think it was really a good move. Time to celebrate, right?
A little louder into the mic, please.
Oh, say it, please, say it.
All right, item F, approval of the 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting schedule.
Okay, last one, and then I'll shut up. At the last meeting of the year, we need to adopt the meeting dates for the following year, uh, we're required to do this for every board and commission of the city, um, they are once again, the second Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM right here in this room.
There were no exceptions, so it's just, uh, regular schedule.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting schedule.
We are actually approving, aren't we? Not recommend-
That's my error on cheat sheet, um, yes, this would be a motion just to approve.
You, you-
That one's my fault.
You read the script right.
I make a motion to approve the 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting schedule.
Boy, don't you feel powerful?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. And this is the last meeting of the year, and I would just like to express my appreciation to everybody, um, you know, this is a great commission, I've really enjoyed working with everybody over this last year, and, um, you know, you couldn't ask for a better bunch of people, better group of people, um, everybody's very serious, most everybody attends every meeting, and, uh, you know, it's very rare that somebody misses a meeting, except every now and then, Commissioner Rivera decides to spend a few months in Puerto Rico, so I believe that's probably where he is right now, but I just wanna thank everybody for all the hard work that you've done, for your, uh, commitment to this commission, and, um, you know, we have a, a mayoral election coming up, and we just don't know what's gonna happen, you know, there, there could be some changes, and I hope there are no major changes, because I really think this group has their, um, their head in the right place, and they really, all of you really seem to want what's best for the city, and you, you really have some very insightful and very, uh, uh, good comments and, um, introspective, uh, perspective on this whole thing, so I really, um, am just glad, you know, that we've been able to accomplish what we've accomplished, we've, we've, uh, done everything without any major snags, without getting into trouble. We've done everything without any major snags, without getting into trouble so far, and I look forward to another year of working with all you if the powers that be decide that that's what's going to happen. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Yeah, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Haug, second by Commissioner Grimes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. 8:10, happy holidays to everybody.